No, you can. So just put a couple of extra chairs besides these three.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is 7:06. First order of business is to review and approve our minutes.
I'm hoping that we approve the meeting minutes of February 13th and February 20th, 2018.
A discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This board will now meet again on April 11th, 2018. And if there are any future meeting dates, we'll run them through Emily. Citizen speak. Do we have anyone here for citizen speak this evening? Come on up, Phil.
Hi. I'm Phil Drohning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I wrote about two weeks ago, a letter to the Board of Selectmen, asking for the board to respond to me with respect to an independent investigation into the issues raised in the indictment against former Senator Joyce. I'm troubled, as a resident, that the board, the planning board, the Milton Planning Board is issued and is discussed in the indictment. I'm troubled about the activities of the chairman and member X that are discussed there. And I think it's important for transparency of town government to hire an independent investigator to look into the issues raised there in the indictment, to ensure that the board was in fact working in the interests of the citizens of the town, the residents of the town, as opposed to working in their own interests, or the interests of developers, or the interests of Senator Joyce. So I still wait for a response to my email from one of the members of the Board of Selectmen or the town manager to answer, you know, whether the town will independently investigate those issues. And if not, why not? Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for citizen speak this evening? Okay, we'll move on. We have a conference now with Laurie Stillman, Caroline Consella, Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, and Dr. Marion Hannan, Partnership for a Healthy Milton. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Good evening.
If you slide over, she can sit.
Yeah.
How are you guys?
Great.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having us. I just wanted to bring to your attention two important programs we'll be implementing at the Health Department. The first is the launch of a new initiative, Partnership for a Healthy Milton. And the second is some updates about the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. I am very excited about this new partnership for a healthy Milton. I was hoping for this for a long time because of the Council on Aging has the friends of the Council on Aging, and Milton Library has the friends of the Milton Library. But now, we can have a new partnership for a healthy Milton, and it will be supporting the Health Department. As you know, our Health Department's very small, with a small infrastructure there. So I'm hoping that with these fresh ideas, with these Milton residents that are stepping up to be on this partnership, that we can do some great things in Milton. Some new programs, new initiatives, and really, you know, reach out into the community and find out what we need in the community, you know, to make our residents healthy. So it's really exciting. So I'm going to turn this over to Madam President.
Thank you so much. My name's Marion Hannan, and I'm a professor of medicine at Harvard Medical School during the day, but a Milton resident 24 hours a day. And I'm the chair of the Board of Directors for our new partnership for Healthy Milton. And I just want to take a couple of minutes to tell you who we are and what we are very briefly. We're a nonprofit organization. We are here to promote and protect the health and well-being of the town of Massachusetts residents, Milton, Massachusetts residents, and the town of Milton workforce. And we want to collaborate with community leaders, residents, and partnering organizations to support a variety of public health and behavioral health programming and activities in the town of Milton. Our initiatives will work to promote healthy people in a healthy community environment, including social determinants of health, not just traditional public health measures, but the toll, Magilla, of public health, including social determinants, social disparities, and other components, and working on determinants of health and health equity. And we want to emphasize the prevention of illness and the prevention of disability for residents. We're created to be a nonprofit organization entitled to receive charitable gifts, donations, grants, property from sources, and to fundraise for important programs for the town and practices that will support a healthier Milton population. And I just wanted to share with you the names of the eight people who were on this partnership for Healthy Milton board, including myself as chair, Priscilla Patnaves, who is secretary, who works as a consumer safety officer with the FDA, Casey Corrigan, who is our treasurer, and he's a national expert on violence prevention against women and children. And we also have members, including Denise Carbone, who's director of the school partnerships for the Norfolk DA, Michael Morrissey's office, Deborah Green Mues, who's here at my side, who's a teacher at the Glover School, Dr. Linda Hudson, who's a professor of public health at Tufts University School of Medicine and Community Health, Caroline Consella, my director of Milton Health Department and guru of all things that we need to know about the town, and also chair of the town Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, as well as president of the Massachusetts Association of Public Health Nurses. So we look to her for a lot of guidance and leadership. And finally, we're rounded out by a fellow named Jonathan Pincus, who's a physician at the Codman Square Health Center. So we represent a variety of intensive health interests and intensive health experiences spanning, if we put all of us together, I think it's 148 years. So we have a lot to give to the town, and we're looking forward to doing that over the next couple of years.
Forever.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it back to. So this is really exciting for the Health Department, for the town of Milton, for the residents. This is really going to be great.
A lot of experience. And we can't thank you enough, especially, you know, you're putting in all kinds of time that it's so needed. But to have professionals like you guys, it's just exceptional. We're very lucky. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to our program director of the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, Laurie Stillman.
Thank you. And I will say, from the Substance Abuse Coalition perspective, we're very happy about this 501(c)(3) because they're there to support our work as well. So I wanted to just spend a little time letting you know about what we've accomplished over the last six months, what our funding status is, and where we hope to go in the future, and a little bit about the Youth Health, Youth Center, which I know is being discussed and is something that's important to us. So over the last six months, we got another grant, and this grant is focusing on mental health issues. Why did we decide to focus on mental health issues? For a couple of reasons. The sheer number of people who are affected by depression, stress, sleep disorders, and different kinds of chronic mental health disease, issues, is just growing exponentially. One in five people are expected to experience a mental health problem. One in 10 people, based on a Massachusetts General Hospital study, can be expected to experience an addiction from a substance use disorder. And many times, these issues are commingled. But we've also heard from the community, particularly after the Parkland schools issue, that there's concern amongst parents about what we are doing to address and to prevent mental health issues. And so, the good news is, is that we've been working on these issues for well before the Parkland issue, but we, incident. But we want to make sure that people know all of the great things that are happening. And I think one of the greatest things that are happening is that a number of our leaders are working together in a collaborative way to sort of boost our effectiveness. So the police, the schools, the Board of Health, business. I was just approached yesterday by the Rotary Club, who wants to help in this. The Milton Women's Club just contacted me. There's just an enormous amount of interest and goodwill, and we call this effort Milton Cares. And why do we call it Milton Cares? Because unfortunately, only one in 10 people who suffer from a mental illness or substance use disorder get the help that they need. And a lot of that is because of the stigma that's still associated with mental disorders. You know, there used to be stigma with having cancer. There used to be stigma with having all kinds of diseases. But there still is this lingering stigma that people are embarrassed and ashamed to get help because they think that people think that the reason why they have these problems is because they did something wrong. They made the wrong choices. And what we've learned over, with science, is that actually, many of these disorders are brain disorders. They're chronic diseases, just like any other physical disease, and we have to treat them in a compassionate way, and we have to get people the help they need. So I just wanted to, you probably saw the letter that the superintendent police chief, Caroline Consella and I, wrote about some of the things that we've been doing, but I just want to reiterate some of them, just because they're so exciting, and I want the public to know about them. One of the first is that we're working, this grant allows us to work with the police department to establish a post overdose response team. And that's going to bring trained officers, plainclothes officers, along with recovery coaches, to the homes of people who have experienced an overdose, or there's, understanding that there is maybe some addiction. This is not about an arrest. This is about Milton Cares. We want to get people connected. Oftentimes, these programs, and they're all over the state, help the family members more than the people who have, who are actually suffering, because the family members are so isolated and stressed out. And we found out about a really interesting program. I don't know, Chief Wells, whether you were aware of this, but we do, we're not aware of this. It's called PRI, Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Treatment Initiative. And this is in Massachusetts, but they're actually working now throughout the country, working with police departments and making free recovery coaches and training police officers on how to be well-trained in doing this kind of work. And our police officers, every single one of them, have been trained now in Mint, Mil, in, I'm sorry, Mental Health First Aid. And many of them are, and many of them are getting other kinds of specialized training. They just got a grant for a social worker, a part-time social worker, shared with Braintree. So the police department is moving ahead with some exciting things. The school department is also doing a number of things. They got a grant to do a whole assessment of what they need to support their behavioral health needs of children, because it is growing exponentially, not only in Milton, but across the state. We got this grant to look into a program called The Bridge for Resilient Youth and Transition, also known as BRIGHT. This is now in about 80 different communities. What it is, is it's a specialized classroom that's set up in the schools for kids who have been out for a prolonged period of time, usually because of a concussion or a mental health disorder, and who are having trouble getting back into school. So it's a transitional program for them. Believe it or not, we've got 50 kids in the schools who are eligible for this program, and we're trying to find the funding to be able to make this reality. So there is a tremendous amount going on in the schools, as well as, in connection with MSAPC, we've been having these parent educational, "parent" standing for promoting awareness and resources for the emotional nurturing of teens. So every other month, we've got hundreds of parents coming and learning about how to build their skills and be able to support their kids. So in addition to us working together, we are also working with Tufts University School of Public Health, their Health Communications Department, and we're going to start an anti-stigma campaign next year. What does that mean? We're going to work in the community with messages, and we're also going to work in the schools with messages, to help take away the shame and embarrassment that people are feeling, and to help everybody feel in Milton that they can help their neighbors when they see them struggling. So we're really excited about that. And I guess I finally want to say that I'm most excited about how all of these partners got together and cobbled together some money to purchase what's called the Interface Referral and Information Service. This is in about 30 different towns across Massachusetts. It's indispensable. What it, because we don't have really any mental health providers, including Milton Hospital, in our town, it's difficult to get access to outpatient counseling, for a number of reasons. There's a shortage of providers. It's hard to tell your story over and over again until you find somebody who has an opening. Insurance issues are often a barrier. This service is going to be available to every Milton resident, young and old, and they can make a free telephone call to a toll-free number. That telephone number is 888-244-6843. The Board of Health, the Milton Police Department, the Milton Public Schools, MSAPC, and Beth Israel de Guinness Hospital, all put in funding to make this possible for our residents. It's going to start in May. We're going to be working really hard over the next month to try and get promotional materials and get the word out. I hope that you'll help us do that, because I just think that it's a wonderful opportunity. So that's a basic overview of what we've done and what we're hoping to do. We're also going to be having, by the way, a parent campaign to promote responsibility amongst parents to prevent underage drinking. So that's another thing that we're going to be doing. So let me talk a little bit about where we are from a funding perspective. We've been able to do all this work because we had a Blue Hills Community Health Alliance grant, about $40,000 a year, and it ends April 30th. This is pretty difficult information for us, but that was a three-year grant. We knew about it. We have been doing a lot of planning. We've been trying to apply for other grants. We helped to establish this 501(c)(3) so that we can open up other opportunities and get donations. Nevertheless, so many other towns support with their own funds their Substance Abuse Coalition. Senator Timelty was able to get an earmark for us this year for $25,000. That was helpful, but we don't know whether it's going to come again next year. And we weren't, the money wasn't released until March, and we had to spend it by June. That wasn't really helpful in terms of doing operational work. We also got a wonderful donation from Mike's 5K. So that helps us too, but we don't know whether that money will, will continue. Braintree, Braintree Town Hall gives $150,000 to their Substance Abuse Coalition. Peabody, $65,000. Melrose, $60,000. Danvers, $33,000. Quincy supports a full-time director. We're not asking for that, but it would be really helpful, is if you're doing budget planning, you have a windfall of budget. We're looking for $25,000. That's enough for us to know that we have a floor, so that we could exist, and then build up from there with other donations and grants as they come along. Otherwise, you know, I don't know where we'll be in a year. I know that we have done an enormous amount of good in this town, and we have a lot of work to do. We just handed in a million-dollar grant to the drug-free communities again. We're hoping that that might will come through. We got $125,000 worth of in-kind matching funds, which was required from all of our community partners. There's a lot of interest, but it's a very, very difficult grant to get. So we can't count on it, and we would like to count on you to really think very strategically in how this town can come up with $25,000. Think of all of the resources this has leveraged, our work. I mean, this interface program, the parent funding, that was over $10,000. We've just, we've brought so much to the table because of our work, and I hope that you see the, the value as well. And I'd like to just wrap up by mentioning the Youth Center. You know, a couple of years ago, when we did our community assessment, the, one of the top things that came up was that kids said that one of the reasons why they go to the woods to drink is because there really isn't organized activities for them to, to come to, you know? And so a lot of parents would say, well, what is their problem? We live right next to Boston. There's just, there's malls and everything like that. And what we learned from them was that the woods is free. You don't have to be invited. You don't have to organize your friends to go. It's a ready-made place for kids to hang out. We need something like that in Milton, and it's on the top of our strategic plan of wanting to do that. I know that there are groups of parents who are interested in seeing if they could raise money. I'm really excited, because I feel like Michael Dennehy has been an incredible supporter and is looking for ways for the town to also, and I know this is a process to try and find the funding, but I'm hoping that we all come together. I think that what I want to say about the Substance Abuse Coalition is that we would like to be thought leaders in this process. We have, one of the nice things about the Coalition is that it's not a partisan group where people who are aligned with this politician or this point of view. We have over 400 members now, and people from all over who are not necessarily involved in town politics. We have an opportunity to bring new voices to the table, get new energy involved in our democratic process here in town. And because there are all kinds of kids who live in town, different cultures and backgrounds, we have to be really attentive, that it isn't a place where just a certain type of kid feels comfortable. It also means that unlike the adage that build them and they will come, that is not true of a youth center. Youth will not come to what we think is good for them. They have to have a voice, and they have to say what it is that they want. This is an incredible opportunity for youth leadership in our town, and I think that we should think about how we can get a few students to not just in a token way, but to actively figure out how we can get kids' voices to be part of the planning process. Like the charrette that helped to develop our master plan, we need to have kids be part of this planning process, and we're happy to be of help in that, including maybe sponsoring and facilitating a town hall, bringing kids and adults together to do some brainstorming. There's different things that we can do, but let's do it in a new way that brings in all our voices. So that's all I would like to say, and thank you very much for your support.
And thank you. As I said earlier, you guys are just accomplishing amazing work. I mean, every time you come in here, Laurie, Caroline, and there's a new partnership, a new relationship, and that's so hard to do. And, but it just shows the work that's being done. And, you know, I, I would hope that the future board would take a good look at trying to find some ways in a funding mechanism to sustain all the great work that you're doing. And then also, on the teen center, there's, without a question, that that's so needed. Both Michael Dennehy, myself, Rep. Driscoll, and Paul DiMato from Recreation took a ride over a couple of weeks ago to the Randolph Intergenerational Center, and it's quite a facility. And, you know, we're a great town. We've, we've, we've always said we're a great town. Well, we deserve a great teen center. And I think there's no question about that, and having you all play a role. But most of all, what you said, having the kids help identify what it is, is I think the biggest component of it all. And I think that that's really important for us to continue to remember.
Good.
Thank you.
I want to ask one question. So the $25,000, do you want to create a line item within the Board of Health budget?
Yeah, if we could.
Is the request for this year, or I got the impression it was for next year, but you, it's not for the current fiscal year, right? It's for fiscal '19?
It's, you know, we're going to pretty much not have any funding to operate this summer. However, we have put monies aside from the Mike's 5K to get us through some of next year, because we also had to put that, up that money as a match to drug-free communities. And which, by the way, that's another reason why we need the money. We have to come up with $125,000 a year, just to get this $125,000 a year from the feds. So that's no easy, easy thing, so that, and it's another reason. So yeah, I mean, if we could get it for next fiscal year, or the following fiscal year. But we're not going to be continuing beyond next fiscal year if we can't figure out a solution to this. And we just need a floor.
We need to sustain what we've, what we've grown, and we need, we need the money, you know, to help propel us forward.
I mean, I'm one vote, but I would have no objection going forward until next year to create the line item. Come, are you, you know, present it before us, and if the board supports it, then get on and make your presentation before the Warren Committee. I mean, you make a compelling argument.
So how would we do it? I mean, doesn't the Selectmen need to first put the...
No, you present your budgets. You present your budgets to Mr. Dennehy, and then the Board of Selectmen supports or doesn't support it. So it would be a new, it would be a $25,000 increase in your FY '19, FY...
Twenty.
Twenty budget, FY '20 budget. But it definitely, and then if you could get it, it gives you going forward, $25,000 line item towards this issue.
I think as we go through the budget process, because we don't have the final numbers from state yet for '19, so as we go through, maybe this, we can all put our collective thinking caps on and see if we can do anything that could help you with next year, or even this fiscal year.
That would be so awesome.
Because I think we're always looking for new funding sources, and that's what we're doing, to try to sustain what we've got going. So that would be wonderful.
The other thing I would say to you, I mean, we've all been to Library Foundation, and, you know, Milton's Foundation for Education. Fly your flag. If you've created, one thing I know a little bit about is 501(c)(3)'s. If you've created it, generate something, have something, and bring it to people, to it. People will come out and support an issue if you, you know, they say if you build it in that area, if you build it in that area, they will come. And there's places in town to have it. I mean, there's just, I think you really want to do it. I mean, you, that's, you need to fly that flag. Like Laurie says, you know, people very often do shun, not just substance abuse, but mental health. Look at the incident in Winchester. Now, it's a tragic case. Obviously, someone with long-term mental health issues, police department knew about it, but it's difficult to deal with these sometimes. And the one thing you're doing by being proactive in both fields, and you've already seen it in the substance abuse field, just in the work you've done in this community, is that in the mental health field, it's a national issue right now. You know, we see it from Parkland, we see it from Newtown, we see it from Mandalay. I mean, it's, it's a national issue. When I went to work for Fallon Ambulance in 1978, in this county alone, I believe there were four mental health, state mental health facilities. I can't even remember how many there were in between Norfolk, just Medfield, Medfield State was, Mattapan State, I mean, there were numerous, and there was just a Globe article the other day about how they all emptied out. And one of the things that, especially from my days as chief in policing, is you would hear people come so frustrated, and you can relate to this, either insurance was restricting them, there was nowhere for them to go, they just couldn't, and the, just door closes, door closes, door closes. And then that leaves it to the family to support it, and it's very, very difficult. But if you can be proactive and help to shun, not just deal with the issues of the illness themselves, shun the stigmas that go with it, and make people understand it, because it can be very difficult. I think you're doing it. And in that aspect, I can't urge you enough to continue to fly your flag, especially now that you're, you know, you're 501, just have something. Brainstorm. Make us something you want to have, and invite people, and just, this is a community where apathy will never live. People will always care, no matter what it's about. If you can make them understand it, they'll come out and pay attention again of all. Each of you sitting here tonight is an example of that, so I congratulate you, and just keep, but I, that's going, going in the '20 account, I, that's what I'm thinking. I would, I could create a line item within the Board of Health budget and come make your argument.
Yeah, I'm just wondering for, because the warrants go in print, final print on Friday. And, you know, just so, for '19. So procedurally, you know, if we were to get any kind of an adjustment in state aid going forward, right between now and town meeting, we've got that, that very old bylaw that says if the number that the, that the Board of Health requested is printed in the back of the warrant, you can't increase the budget by more than 500. So I'm wondering whether in the next year or so, we could, whether the Board of Health, or maybe the Health Director, because the Board of Health's not going to meet in the next year or two, could maybe submit a request, some kind of a letter that would enable us to bump up the request, so that if funds were to become available, and they may or they may not, but town meeting would have a little more flexibility.
That's a very good idea.
That's excellent.
To deal with it for '19.
And then '20, going forward.
Right, right.
Because that would be like...
The other option would be, the October town meeting could always, if there were free cash or some other state, you know, some other funding available that additional overlay release, anything like that that might become available, might, might be an option. But then you're waiting until the fall, and you just mentioned you might have an issue with funding this summer. So that might be something we could ask the town administrator to talk to the chair of the Warren Committee about, and see whether we can at least allow some capacity for town meeting to act, if there is any money available.
Not a lot of money.
It's not, no.
It's not a lot of money, but it goes, it would go far away.
I know, I get that.
So. I have a great team.
Should I do?
Yes.
Make sure you pay them tonight.
If I could just add one more note. We had a preliminary and very engaging meeting, myself and Director Adam Cheff from the Library with a group of residents that want to get involved in the teen center. They have young children. They're in the process of creating a survey, to your point, Laurie, that will go out to the youth of the town and ask them what they want and how it should be built, so that we're not deciding what to be built, but to your point, that they have a say. And that survey should be ready in the next week or two, and we'll post it online and start capturing some of that information. So, very important.
And you may want to speak also with Reverend John Allen, because I know that...
Yes.
Okay, that's great. All right.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming in. Cheers.
Okay. Item number six on our agenda is a discussion with OFO, which is a dockless bike share program. So we have Steve and Carolyn come in and educate us on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. It's a really hard presentation to follow there.
Seriously.
It's a tough act to follow, isn't it?
It is.
Very commendable. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, we want to thank you for coming in. If you could give us a little bit of a background of each of you and your program, I'm sure the viewers at home and the town would like to hear. We do have a bicycle advisory committee here in town and, you know, a lot of avid bicyclers and, you know, streets that are made for both runners and bikes. So, I mean, we're really into this, and so we're really excited to hear what you have to say.
Okay. I'm Caroline Sampaiero. I'm the head of policy for OFO in the Northeast. I'm working with towns and cities around the Northeast on their goals to bring bike share to their communities. My background, just so you all know, is in transportation advocacy. Before joining OFO two months ago, I was an advocate working at Transportation Alternatives in New York City, which is, you know, a nonprofit that advocates for biking, walking, public transit. So I worked hard to bring bike lanes and bike share to New York and have worked closely with colleagues around the country on similar ideas. And so I was excited to join OFO because it's a company that's well-positioned to partner with towns and cities to achieve goals around bike share. We have large operations around the world and I think unrivaled experience in that sense.
Great. And my name's Steve Byrne, and I work for a firm called Tremont Strategies Group, and we've been working with OFO for over a year now, trying to help identify communities in the state and in the region where we think that bike share would really, or that would benefit from a robust bike share program. In terms of my background, I've studied urban and regional policy at Northeastern with a bit of a focus on transportation policy, and I've worked both in state and local government, but both in the legislature and back in, actually on our Board of Select in the town of Arlington, Massachusetts.
Great.
So we brought a presentation that we could quickly walk through and then have a discussion? Okay. And we had some great conversations with Mike and about bike share and the background. So thanks again for having us back. So I'll just flip through this. As I mentioned, OFO is the largest bike share company in the world. We operate programs of all sizes around, you know, in different cities and towns. I'm sorry this next slide didn't print, but just to give you a little bit of information about where we're operating currently, we did pilots last year in communities in Massachusetts in Revere, Malden, Chelsea, and Worcester. And we currently are operating in Seattle, in Dallas, Texas, on a number of campuses around the country, college campuses. And so, you know, and we've heard a lot of interest in Massachusetts and from both towns and cities to bring our services here. So as a company, we also, you know, consider ourselves, we have a podium and we want to use it, so we have partnerships, philanthropic partnerships that we really value and care about. I think a good example of one was a partnership we had with the J.J. Barrera Foundation. Following the storm that really destroyed Puerto Rico, we sent 600 of our bicycles there, and they're still there, being used by residents that have been disconnected by the sort of ravaging storm. We're working in DC right now where we have a pilot program on an affordability pilot with the DC Housing Authority. So folks that are living in public housing are going to have discounted memberships to our bike share service.
I would just add that it seems like the teen center, which we just heard about, might be a really good avenue for an additional partnership here in Milton.
Absolutely. Sorry again about some of these slides, but to give you a little bit of a sense about our bike, there are a number of companies like OFO. I think our bikes are, our bikes are, they go through extensive safety testing, and, you know, they are, they're built for shared use. The wheels themselves are not inflatable. They're rubber all the way through, so they're meant to sort of handle the wear and tear of people sharing them. They have a basket and a front and rear light. And we also actually have electric bike models that some towns and cities are interested in using as part of their bike share fleet. Those are not currently operating now, but in the next couple of months, we'll have them available. So if that's something that's of interest to Milton, we'd be able to work with you on that. These slides aren't printing at all.
The slides didn't print.
Yeah, are bad on that. So just listen to me then. The way that the system works is most of it's based on a mobile app. So you download the app, which is free, and you sign up, a sort of membership, although there's no financial commitment to do that. You unlock the rear wheel of the bike with a QR code on your smartphone. And so the rear wheel of the bike is GPS-enabled, so we can track the bikes and know where they are at any given time. And then when you're done with your ride, you manually close that lock and your ride is turned off. And so it's $1 an hour to use the bikes. You don't have to become a member. There's no hold on your credit or debit card when you do use the bikes, which is something that's been, I think, an issue with other bike share programs. And so we're really looking to provide, you know, a flexible, affordable addition to the existing transit network, filling first and last mile gaps that some people may have getting to the train or to where they're trying to go. Unlike a subway car, which is on a rail line and can't go off of it, you know, bikes that are shared present different operational challenges. And so I think one of the things that sets our company apart is really our experience operating at a large scale and understanding the inner workings and challenges of operating a shared bike system. We focus on local hires. We care deeply about, you know, when we bring this new transportation option to a community, we want to make sure that we staff up and meet some of the, you know, employment goals that are already existing in community-based organizations. The entire operation in our region is overseen by a regional manager, a general manager, that has an operations background. So actually, our Boston regional manager is starting on April 9th. Sorry that he couldn't be here tonight with me. Reporting to the general manager is a head of operations who oversees the mechanic team, the fleet managers, and the patrol teams. And the patrol teams, I think, are a really interesting part of our operation. They are the folks that are literally out on the street, addressing parking issues, moving bikes around to rebalance them, sort of serving as customer service representatives of the bike share system itself. And so what we typically do with any community in which we work is we divide, we get that input of where we think hotspots might be for using the bikes, where we think pinch points might be for, you know, problem areas. If, let's say it's a crowded sidewalk and we want to make sure bikes don't cluster in that area, patrol teams would station in those places and throughout the day would work on sort of solving any challenges that arise. So we sort of, we try to anticipate the ways in which shared bikes could become a burden and really get ahead of that. In terms of parking education, I think there are a couple different ways. We like to create like a carrot and a stick approach to encouraging good parking behavior on the inside.
Favorite terms, the carrot and the stick.
I know, right. I know. It's one that always...
Always lead with a carrot, but never let them forget that you have a stick.
Exactly.
We're not so firm.
Yeah. So when users sign up, they're, you know, we develop a sort of home screen for every community with which we work, and that has the rules in that community about bike parking. It also gives you tips about preferred bike parking locations. And then within the app, we create sort of geo-fenced areas where people are being encouraged to park their bikes or where they're being discouraged not to park their bikes. And then every user has an OFO score. So if you do a good thing by, let's say, bringing a bike to an area that needs more bikes because they haven't been rebalanced, your score can go up when you park a bike in one of those locations. If you park a bike where you're not supposed to park a bike, your score goes down. And your score can go down to a level that allows, that leads you to be sort of banned, actually, from our system. So we use the app itself as a way to communicate with people and encourage good behavior. We also can block users. We know that's not enough. We rely on our patrol team, really, to fill all the gaps that the technology can't. Moving on to the slide where you can see a lot of different scenarios of bike parking, I think, you know, a bike share program can be an opportunity, you know, to provide other goals. So I'm sure the town of Milton is looking to provide bike parking more generally in some of the areas where people are riding bikes. I think, you know, one scenario is just we highlight those areas in our app and we encourage people to use them. Some communities that we work with are actually creating new designated areas in simple ways, just paint on the street. We also have racks that we can provide that give people a clear sense of like, oh, this is, you know, an OFO location, this is where I can find my bike share bike. So I think we would be really eager to hear from you all about, you know, some of the opportunities and challenges you would see around parking and ways that we could be a strong partner to you should we work together. Customer service is always the most important, and, you know, it can make or break a customer's experience. And so we look to have impeccable customer service. It's 24/7. The ways that you can reach us are clearly marked on the bike itself, and we have aggressive response time so that people aren't left waiting. And those are things that we work through with towns and cities before we begin our program. Yeah, so I think more broadly, you know, we're a company that wants to help towns and cities achieve larger mobility goals. So I know you all, I saw on the agenda that there's, you know, a traffic study and a master plan, you know. We're working with cities around the country, towns around the country, to help them achieve some of the bike-related goals they may already have set for themselves. So in some communities in New York, for example, that I work with, they've set a ridership increase goal, and we can be a partner in helping them achieve that. There may be ones specific to Milton that we can be a partner on as well. So, you know, I think another thing that we like to focus on is creating a regional network. And so we had a great meeting last night, actually, with the bike committee in Quincy because we're going to be partnering with the city of Quincy to provide a bike share program this spring. We're expecting to launch in May. And so we, last night, we spent a good amount of time with a map, sort of identifying hotspots, talking through connectivity issues with some of the T-stops going offline and just challenges they were facing with, you know, sort of transportation issues more broadly. You know, we would see the opportunity of working, partnering with Milton as a way to extend the network there and to create more of a regional bike share system for this area. And so, you know, really excited about that. We also, you know, have, I think, because our bikes are GPS-enabled and because we can track that data, I think we can provide back great information to towns and cities that can help your planning purposes as well. So hotspots where people like to ride, you know, places where bikes are constantly ending up, you know, these, this is information that can be really useful to planners, to the police, to transportation agencies. So that's just a broad overview of us. You know, we, as I mentioned, we're, you know, we're working with communities around Massachusetts now. And, you know, given the launch in Quincy, I think we would really love to think about opportunity to work with you all this spring and try this out. You know, we know that Curry College is an opportunity as well, providing sort of more mobility options for students there. Could be a great, a great thing. And, you know, haven't reached out yet, but we're waiting to have this conversation before we did. You know, I know that there were some discussions around the existing bike path you have and getting people to that, as well as connecting people to existing transit in the town.
And we did hear last night from a few folks in Quincy who wanted to come over to Milton on bikes.
Right.
Maybe that's reciprocal.
Yeah, we have a very unique town, we think, and especially having a college in it, having the transit, having the bike path. And, you know, we're really engaged and excited about these opportunities as we move forward. We have a very bike-friendly community, great leadership within it. We have a lot of people who, as I said, you know, people who run and bike along the streets. I think it's great. So I think, you know, having you come in and give us an overview of OFO and kind of give us a little bit of guidance, I think that I'll open it up to my colleagues, but I think it's something that is worth a future discussion again.
Are you in Boston?
We're not.
You're not?
Yeah.
Boston has an exclusivity clause with Hubway.
Okay.
So they don't allow any other operators in the city. And that's the same for Brookline, Cambridge, and Summerbowl.
So you could go anywhere between Milton and, like, you couldn't go into the city, you'd have to ride back out here?
Well, we, in communities where we work where that is the case, there's an exclusivity agreement. For example, our operations team would move bikes back. So, you know, if a rider is going to end up at that line, which will feel arbitrary to them, we would be responsible for moving the bikes out and not breaking that exclusivity agreement. Yeah.
So a person rides a bike from Central Ave Station in Milton down the bike path, eventually makes their way UMass Boston, which is a final goal for where they want to be. So UMass Boston, and they're going to be there for the day. So they would, they could lock the bike up there and you guys could retrieve it and bring it back. Or they could ride it back.
Yeah, either way. UMass Boston, we've actually been speaking with as well, so...
Okay.
So that would be an exception.
I didn't, I knew that the other company was in Boston Care. I didn't know it was an exclusive contract. I didn't know that.
It is.
Okay. It's almost like an Uber for a bike, in a way.
It's such a shared principle.
Find it, use it, just track it.
Way more low-tech in some ways.
Right.
The original shared transportation, the bicycle.
Lot more exercise.
Yeah, exactly, right, yes.
It's good for you.
So the electric ones come out.
Help with some hills.
Any other questions?
I don't really have questions, no. Just thank you for the presentation because it is an interesting topic and one that the master plan committee that I'm serving on has been talking about from time to time, and it's good to have this information to learn more about it.
Okay.
Thank you again for coming in. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
What do you see as next steps? How should we follow up or...
Check in with me. Yeah, we'll follow up on it. Again, I had sat down with this group before, and everything that you heard here tonight, I had heard, and it sounds like an exceptional product. The fact that they have people that will come out and collect the bikes and take them from places where we don't think they should be and put them to a place where data tells them that someone else can collect it, I thought was really interesting. There is no rack involved. You talked about the one downtown Boston, you have to find a rack to put it on.
Put it away.
Yeah.
And what we'll do is, I know there was some printing errors, we'll send over this PowerPoint deck so you can, so you can look it over as well. And Caroline's information's on the back, so please follow up with her or myself.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Caroline, thank you. Steve, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too.
Okay. Speaking of master plan implementation, the next order of business is to discuss the Master Plan Implementation Committee Traffic Study Contract. So the MPIC is requesting authorization for an expenditure in the amount of $18,650, which includes the attached contract of $15,600 plus an additional $3,000 for traffic counts for the estimated provided by, provided to John Thompson, our town engineer. So Katie, do you want to kind of give a little bit of an overview since you've been sitting on this committee, just on where we are on this?
Yes, and it requires approval of both this board and the planning board if we want to, if this committee can spend any of its $50,000 in funding that we had this year. The committee has been working on the Milton Village area and some zoning proposals for the Milton Village area, as well as the waterfront. And what came up during that conversation was a lot of the residents of High Street and Adams Street said, look, traffic has gotten worse, not better, in this area. And as a result of a lot of discussion, we thought it might make sense, if you're going to look at potential mixed-use zoning for the area, to get a better handle on what the current traffic counts are, what the situation is. So what this would fund is, I think it's Beta is the name of the company. Mike has already signed the contract, to do some counts in the High Street, Adams Street, Elliott, and right in that, right in that Randolph Ave, right in that general area in the Village, and do some analysis of the counts. the counts.
Anyone who travels on that road, especially during the commute times, understands that you can go back past St. Michael's sometimes in the morning to try to get through that intersection and
Coming up from Canton Ave, I've, I've lived that, and, and just getting over onto Canton Ave, from Canton Ave getting on to Randolph to then make a left turn or right, and it's very dangerous.
It is. And, and people come down Adam Street at a high rate of speed, so Beta's going to go out there. We were looking for, for help from the Norfolk County Commissioners, who's been a, a great partner with the town, to do some traffic counting work, but unfortunately, those traffic counters are somewhere else at this timeframe, and this work needs to get done, so.
City and towns you got to compete with.
They've been very kind to us.
Very kind, yeah.
They've been in the past, that's for sure.
So that's the additional $3,000, but we thought they would help us out with that, but unfortunately, their, their traffic counting equipment is, is in another one of those municipalities, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Master Plan Implementation Committee's request in the amount of $18,650, of which $15,650 would fund a traffic study and $3,000 would fund traffic counts.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next order of business is a discussion on the FY 2019 budget.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As, as you know, the first draft has come back from the printer of the warrant, the May Town Meeting warrant. We're in the process of reviewing that. This board is, is reviewing it. All of my department heads are taking a look at their numbers. The warrant committee has disseminated it. We look to have that back to the printer by Friday, as, as Ms. Conlon had said, with the intention of getting it out in the mail by April 6th and into the homes, seven days prior to the April 24th election. So, again, based on the news that we got from the State House and the, state and local aid and the Chapter 70 money that came in, it was a balanced budget. All the departments got what they had asked for with the parameters that we had set forth, obviously, the year after the override. We did hear a, a new ask from the Board of Health tonight that will, will certainly entertain with the warrant committee. So we hope to have all those edits back and back to the printer down in Hanover by Friday.
Great.
I wonder whether we could just, you know, after they left, I was thinking more about it, that maybe the reserve fund is a better way of going about it. Maybe we could bump up the number for the reserve funds, in terms of the request, not, not what's appropriate, but just the request, so that if we get to May and there is some additional funding, then there may be some way to give them some help.
Anyway, they can get through that gap.
To me, there was, it's always like, it's just from being, it's kind of like, leave the reserve fund alone, you know, so, but it does.
Well, yeah, all I mean is just table 10 in the back.
I know what you mean, yeah, I agree.
So we have some capacity to increase it, if, if possible. Wouldn't necessarily guarantee them anything.
Some good ideas. Okay. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, just a discussion on the logistics of the transition from a three to five-member board. Michael?
Again, we, we talked about this at numerous meetings. Mr. Ritchie had, had priced out some, some tables and stuff. It was the unanimous decision that this, this board should continue to meet in, in this prestigious room, so we will continue to do that after the election, April 25th. We're going to try to get a meeting, and I think that last week in April before we head to town meeting, obviously, a town meeting will be up at the high school meeting, but I think the plan is to come in here after that, after that timeframe and, and just sit in here and, and check on the logistics. Mr. Ritchie's confident that if, if things get too cumbersome in here or too, you know, too full, that we could, we could move that table that he had, had budgeted for, so. For the, for the short term, stay in the existing room in the footprint that we're in now, see what it, what it looks like when we add another two bodies to the table. Obviously, tonight, when, when you saw our group as large as the Healthy Milton come up, the room gets a little bit congested, especially the table, but I think going forward, out of the gate in May, we can continue in this room with, with this current setup and, and make some changes as necessary.
Okay. I agree. I think that's a great idea.
Some towns do have like a semicircle table, and I'd like to see if we could do something like that for this room. It would require reconfiguring it a little bit, but
I think we're going to wind up there eventually, but I'm fine with Michael going forward. Let's
Oh, yeah, for the short term, yeah, I think we should, but it would be nice if, because the other boards that use this room or use for meeting space, I think that could still accommodate all those other needs if we could, if we could rearrange it.
Good. Okay, item number 10, we have a discussion related to the Blue Hills Regional Vocational School Committee vacancy that, with the unfortunate passing of Festus Joyce. We do have two candidates, but it, and we've been trying to secure a joint meeting with the school committee to be able to vet the candidates and have a conversation about them, but just recently, one of the candidates, after we had agreed to a, a meeting date, had said that they had a conflict. So we're going back and forth now on trying to find some sort of mutual date to be able to fill that vacancy and have that conversation with, with both boards, so.
Correct. Yeah, we, we had established April 4th as the date, one of the candidates can't make it, so we're looking at either a Tuesday or a Thursday in the near future.
Okay.
And again, it has to be a joint committee, a joint meeting of the school committee body and this body here, so.
So stay tuned.
Stay tuned, yeah.
Okay. Item 11, approval of the Wallaston Golf Club change of offices. We have a motion.
That's all right. You prefer, that's fine. Do you want me to?
Go ahead.
All right. I move that we approve the amendment application to the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission for Change of Beneficial Interest, Board of Directors, for the Wallaston Golf Club's liquor license. And the following members of the Board of Directors voted at the club's annual meeting on November 2nd, 2017. David Gooding, 173 Spark Street, Brockton. James J. Ferreira, 121 Will Drive, Canton. Paul McManus Jr., 500 Atlantic Avenue, Boston. Joseph Harrington Jr., 190 Williams Street, New Bedford. Christopher Castor, 267 Hillside Street in Milton. James Moore, 2 Elias Lane in Milton. William F. Walsh, 152 Bradley Road, Milton. Edward J. Merritt, 455 West Broadway, South Boston. Edward Regan, 9 Bayberry Lane, Norwell. And John Shea, 53 Wood Street, Milton.
Second.
Any comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number 12 is approval of an Arbor Day proclamation.
So I'll make a motion to approve and sign a proclamation declaring Friday, April 27th, 2018, as Arbor Day in the town of Milton.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 13 is approval of the vehicle use policy.
You want to postpone that for a minute?
I think we, I think we want to take that under advisement for next meeting and, and look through this document a little bit.
There's a little more work, myself and
A little more work to do on that, yeah.
Selectman Conlon went through it today, and there's, there's still some work to do on that one, so.
I agree. So we'll defer that until next meeting, and we'll, I'll take a look at that and put our comments in and, and move on that. But item number 14 is our social media policy, which is a social media policy just for town employees, and we have all vetted this policy. We, we, at least I, I feel very comfortable with it.
I do, too.
So long as everybody's comfortable with this, and, Michael, if you want to just kind of give a, just a brief overview on what it encompasses, I think that it's important, you know, you know, as the, as the town administrator and one who oversees the department heads, I think it's important for you to kind of articulate that.
Yeah, so we, we, on a, on a daily basis, we, we live in the world of social media. We, we try to use it adventagently and proactively in town to get our message out. Sometimes things hit social media that aren't necessarily true, or they may be opinionated. We try, we try to stay away from that. All of our department heads know, some of our department heads use social media, and, and we do advocate that they do do it. It's a great way of reaching many audiences in town in this day and age. We, we just caution that, that they use it sensibly and, and to get the true message out there to the town. So this is, this will be a living, breathing document that, that will shape itself over time. It's, it's for our town employees. Each of our department heads will be handed a copy of this at our next department head meeting. They had a lot of input into how it was shaped as, as did this board, so I appreciate that. But it'll be a living, breathing document that, that will, will grow in time as, you know, the social media starts to, to change. I think, you know, two years ago, no one knew what Instagram was. Two years from now, there might be another tool out in social media that, that'll have to be added or deleted to this, to this policy. But it, it gives us a, a good starting point, you know, from, from which our department heads and employees should, should understand their role in, in government and, and, and how we, we use it effectively.
Yeah, and this doesn't cover the elected officials, nor does it cover the boards and committees, which is a whole nother ballgame, and I think one that, that I would suggest, I won't be on the next board, but one, one that I would suggest that the next board does take up because, you know, from my perspective, and it's just my opinion, that, you know, you can run into issues with, with meeting violations, with people commenting on things, and I think also with information being shared prior to it being vetted through, whether it be the, the authority that, that they go before, you know, and I, and I just think that it's, it's, it's a, it's a, social media is a fine line. It's a very difficult one. It can be very useful, but it can also, it can also bring a lot of difficulties to situations and misinformation, I guess. So that's it, but I, we have a motion before us at least to cover the town's end of it.
I move that we approve the social media policy as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, item 15, we have approval of a one-day liquor license.
So I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Mary MB Wakefield Charter Trust for its spring garden event on Saturday, May 19th, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 1465 Barshaw Road, which is the site.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a board and committee appointment for the tree warden.
I move that we appoint Branch Lane of 85 Highland Street as the tree warden to serve through March 2019.
Second.
Any discussion?
He loves this job.
He does.
Oh, yeah.
Branch does, he, he does a great job, and, and we're lucky to have him. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item number 17, the town administrators' report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nice to see the spring weather arrive today. With that, unfortunately, is the sins of winter, as the snow piles melt, so a little hiccup today with the, the street sweeper went down. It, it's being repaired and should be back up tomorrow. So all those snowbanks that have turned into piles of limbs and debris, the Public Works Department is working through that. Patch crew out each day the last four or five, so. With all those adverse winter freeze-thaw cycle, the seasonality of it, that crew's been out there. The curbside yard waste collection will take place next week, Wednesday the 4th and Thursday the 5th, first one of the year, so there should be an abundance of, of stuff out there. The contractor will plan accordingly. From a parks perspective, the Mary C. Lane Playground Equipment has arrived. The installation of that equipment will begin next week. I talked to Director Pertios today. The parks are continuing to dry out, and they hope to open next week. There is a bit of rain coming Friday, but I'm sure, as you know, running the dog down the park, it's, it's wet.
Andrews is like, wet.
Yeah.
Wet. Don't go there without boots.
Yeah. But just in, in, in the, keeping spring in mind, the tennis court nets will go on tomorrow. Kelly Field Courts, that bid has been awarded. The demolition will take place in June, and they hope to have all those tennis courts back functioning in the first week of September, which will be ready for hopefully a nice fall and, and the season, Milton High season, so. Henry's Phase 1 demolition update. We had a very, very progressive conversation with the T, and we're very close to signing the force account agreement. We, this board, we're going to ask this board to help with the reserve fund transfer from Article 42 of last May's town meeting, which takes the $397,445 set aside for the demolition. Gives us the ability to put that into a force account with the T, which they'll work down. The pre-construction, we're having a pre-construction meeting onsite next Tuesday. Members from the MBTA, the town, the developer and their demolition company
roses team.
Tuesday. So there should be a lot of activity going on in that area this time next week. There's four or five trees on Central Ave that need to come down. The Jersey barriers need to go up. You'll see the contractors start to stage some of, some of their equipment, and hopefully Monday, the 9th, we, we start with Phase 1 of the demolition, which will, will take about five weeks. It's not diversion. It's not the, the trolleys will still be running. We'll be working outside of that 50-foot buffer zone, but it's that five-week pre-demo work that, that will help us avoid a long diversion period. It could cut the diversion period down significantly, so that, we should see that work starting, or starting to activate this time next week, so.
Great.
Yeah. Just a couple of thank yous. April Lamru, who's on our planning board, she's always looking for grants for the town. We, she, she found one for housing production, which we're in the process of filling out a grant form for. We unsuccessfully filed an application for the downtown technical assistance, which is basically parking studies.
Right.
There were many, many communities in, in the Commonwealth that filed the same exact ask. There was $390,000. We didn't get it, but I just want to thank her personally for continuing to try to find grants for this town, in addition to everything, everything she does on the planning board and in her family and professional career, so. I want to thank her for that. Also, on the May 12th meeting, I complimented the Capital Improvement Committee and this board for the investment that they made in the equipment. I forgot to thank the Copeland Foundation. They made a huge investment in, in the fleet for this entire town, and, and it needs to be noted.
In 2016.
And I omitted that, so. Very, very, very good to see all that equipment out on the street, and we thank the Copeland Foundation for that. The last one is a congratulations to Coach Peter Mullen and the Milton Youth Hockey U-14 Girls Team. They won the state championship a week ago Sunday in overtime on a penalty shot, which is pretty phenomenal.
Oh.
Yeah, in addition to the Milton Youth Hockey Girls Program being named Mass Hockey's number-one program in the state, I think this is a great way to end their season, so congratulations to Coach Mullen and, and the girls.
Big congratulations to them, and, and, you know, really, and I don't want to single out the boys, but to, to all the great girls programs that are happening in town, and I know girls softball's starting now, and what an incredible organization that is, so.
Giraffe was last night.
There you go. So it, it, I, I just, I, I know people who are affiliated with it, and, and, you know, to have girls sports be so strong and to have so many girls involved is just so crucial, especially in this day and age, and it's awesome to see, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Chairman's report. So I have something really exciting to share. Caitlin Clavett, who was an incredible art teacher at Glover School, who was tragically killed a few years ago by a manhole cover on Route 93. There is going to be a race in her honor now, a road race, on September 23rd, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. It's gonna be the same course as the 5K that the Milton Road Race does, and it's gonna be called Caitlin's Run for the Arts. And she was an incredibly passionate art teacher. He, I was fortunate enough to have both of my boys as, as students of Caitlin, and, and she was so inspiring, and, but she also had this other side of her, where she was really into biking an awful lot, and she, she would do 200 miles of biking for MS, and, and so she had this physical activity side of her, and just a gift to, to really reach out to kids, and I think this is awesome that we're gonna now be honoring her with a road race. So I look forward to so many families coming out promoting arts in our community and, and really, you know, you know, taking pride in all that she did for our students, so. It's really exciting. So there'll be more information as we move along, but I just wanted to announce that, as it's been approved, and Lieutenant Foley for the Milton Police Department has approved.
Your, your road race plan.
Road race plan.
Good carry.
Yeah, he's, he's the best at it, so, so we're very fortunate. So that's all I have for tonight.
I don't have a report tonight.
So I just have two things. One is pursuant to our meeting with the Fire Building Committee. I met with Commissioner Finn last Saturday, and we had a very interesting discussion, and I think it'd be very prudent of us to bring Joe in to meet with the fire station. He's, he, he knew very much the things that I had talked about when I was there. He's currently in, in the middle of doing two rehabs, which is, and building two new fire stations in the city, and he gets it. He understands the issue, but he, one of the things he liked a lot was, he agreed wholeheartedly, was the analogy about 93 and, and the proximity of fire stations to, to 93, and it's, that's, that's a hundred thousand plus more, two hundred thousand cars a day through our community and those neighborhoods. So I think it'd be very prudent of us to bring Commissioner Finn and have him talk before the fire station building committee. The other thing is, we had a meeting, Michael and I had a meeting, Michael came to a meeting with the Housing Trust, invited Mass Housing Partnership here the other day to look at both the Kitter Library and the remaining four acres of the town farm. I understand, too, that just the Kitter Library comes under the library trustees, and I don't want to act like we're taking, but it was really, you know, we've dealt with not just this board, but many boards before this. We've seen these massive projects walk in here, you know, "I want to build 100, I want to build 90, I want to build 50," and given that, affordable housing has really cut kind of like a nasty, it, it has like a fearfulness to it when people hear it here, and rightfully so with the types of projects, but Tom Carroll here on that committee, the people from Mass Housing Partnership, they were really good in working up both of them, and understanding that, A, you know, how could we provide affordable possibilities here for our own kids, you know, for the kids of the future, for our employees, for the teachers, that Lyman Road, Doug and Lane, those are all built for, as ways to do this, you, why can't we do this again? And then we looked at Governor Stot and, and they understood very much, you know, we made, we made them very clear that, you know, we were the trustees, that it had to be within the will. They, they were really, they had some great ideas. They've done projects like this in Concord, on the Cape, in Acton, and, and met, and, you know, made these fit, you know, not just the, the need and the structure of the community, but like the makeup of the community. Although I will tell you one thing, if you haven't been up there, Michael and I, they have levels. The, the acres are just, it's, it's down to nothing, right?
You can see the Blue Hills.
You can see the Blue Hills, yeah, yeah. It was, when I got out of the car, I was like, wow. But, so they're gonna work with the committee a little bit more. I talked a little about RFIs just to kind of see, but they said if you're gonna, they want you to come up with an RPI, so they're gonna come, put something, and bring it to this board to kind of give us some thoughts on how we should go forward. The one thing is that the big house, the Men's Arms Hall, which I knew the most about, because, because the Dillons lived there for so long, is really in serious, you know, it wasn't even healthy to be inside it. We had to go outside. And the other, we couldn't gain access to. We couldn't even go inside it, so. But they got the, they got the, the message of where we're at and what we're thinking about, so let's see what happens. But that was just, you know, even if you could build six units, or four units, or five units, it's a step forward, you know, it's, it's, it's really something that could be good for this community, so let's see how that progresses.
I think we should invite the Affordable Housing Trustees to come in for a joint meeting with the Governor Stot and trustees.
I think they'll, I think.
We have been talking about different options.
I said this to Tom, I, the only, I, I want, I want to see what they get back for. I want them to have something for you before they even come in.
Yeah, I just, I'd hope we're all working in tandem, because we've been talking about affordable housing there for a long time, and, and I've suggested, too, that I think Tom Hurley, if we could invite him to join us, because he, he has a lot of knowledge with historic tax credits and how something could be structured there so that it might work.
I'm fine with that. So I'll, can we bring that up on our next meeting? You all right with that?
Sure.
Our next political officer. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Citizens speak response.
So if you don't comment, I, I usually don't comment, but I would like to comment on.
Go ahead.
So, I was police chief when that investigation began, even though it wasn't a local investigation. I understand it was a federal investigation. The FBI never speaks on, on investigations. But I do know that, you know, they're extremely thorough in this. District Attorney Morrissey's office has also monitored this. I've not heard or ever read or seen once in teller of evidence that implicates anyone associated with this town, and just knowing how the FBI works their investigations, I think Mr. Ken Dennehy or Chief King or Summer would, would hear that very quickly. They took a lot of ti, I was still chief when this started, so they took a lot of time putting that together. So with regard to Mr. Joe Hennings' suggestion that we launch some type of independent investigation, I don't know what that would be based upon, and I, I would not be one to even, as long as that FBI investigation's ongoing, I wouldn't want to do anything to, to, you know, I just don't know where he's getting this from. I can understand him writing it, and I appreciate he's a selectman, he has the right, as a citizen, he has the right to, to have his opinion, but I just don't see anything there that warrants it at this point. I don't, I've never seen that or heard anything of that.
Well, I think you're the most appropriate person to speak about it, so, so thank you, and, you know, obviously, you know, it is a, a federal investigation and led by, you know, the US Attorney as well, and so. I'm glad that you were able to shed some light on that, because I think that that's important for, for us to, to hear that, so, but thank you.
I was not gonna comment on it tonight, maybe at a future date, but I, I'd rather not comment at the moment.
That's fine, that's.
Okay, future agenda items?
I just had one more thing, just for the future. We'll get it on the agenda for April 11th, but the town is in the process of, of filling out its complete street policy. In order to do this, we have to submit it to MassDOT by Friday. I am the signatory for that. It was presented to this board. It was presented at a public hearing in February. Bicycle Advisory Committee, Traffic Commission for comments. I do have the policy here. I'm gonna sign it so that the town doesn't miss out on, on the filing date, but we, we'll put it on for the 11th so that we can formally introduce the policy.
Great.
To this board.
I think we're all generally in agreement on it anyway. We were at the last meeting, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
So move.